All right. We'll call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of October 4th, 2021 to order. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Present.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal is absent. Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather tonight, and we thank you for our freedoms, for our country, and for our community. We pray that you will bless our first responders and also our military. And we pray that you will grant us the wisdom, strength, and compassion as we meet here this evening to conduct our city's business. Please be with us as we make these decisions. We pray for these things in Christ's name, amen. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
We have no public comment. Item four, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of September 20th, 2021, as presented? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion, any corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. We have no public hearing tonight, no special messages and proclamations. We don't have any approval of expenditures. Item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole public safety and finance and personnel as dated as September 27th, 2021, as presented in your packet? Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Snow. Any corrections, any discussion, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving to unfinished, number nine, unfinished business, we have for second reading this evening, ordinance number 549H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow a mural within the central business district at 216 South State Street. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, a second by Alderman Porter. Any discussions? Alderwoman Frank?
Yes, I know we've done this this way for a couple of years now, or at least three murals that I know of, but I'm wondering, why do we do this backwards? Like, why do we let them do it and then ask for approval? And is this, is this going to be a habit? Is this how we're always going to do it?
No, I think that's a good point. I appreciate your point. I do think that the council should see what murals that are presented to be placed in the community. I think the council should see it. You're the ones who are going to be held accountable. I know that that's the way this transpired. I believe they wanted to keep it a, kind of, as a surprise or whatever. But Gina, do you have anything to add about that?
I was just going to say, the ones that they do during Heritage Days, they do come after the fact because they want to do the big grand unveiling at Heritage Days. If they went through the process with the public hearing, the published notice, pictures on the website, it wouldn't be the big grand unveiling during Heritage Days. So the Heritage Days murals, you know, in the past, the president was set to come in after the fact so that they could have that grand unveiling. They do disclose the picture to staff and administration. Obviously, there was an administration change during this process, but they do disclose it to us beforehand in case there are any red flags or issues ahead of time. But yeah, it's the Heritage Days ones, they like to do the grand unveiling. The other murals are always done in the proper order.
And if I might add on that, in the future, I think we'll have the council see those, the council will see those before, even the ones at Heritage Days. I think they should see them. I think that I certainly have a right to see them, and if I were sitting there, I'd want to see them, so... Yes, Alderwoman Frank?
I don't think it's my objection to what it is, but that we're doing it maybe special for them and maybe not for other people.
Well, I don't disagree with you. I think, and by the same token, I also think that the council, they may object to something that's proposed. You may find something that's presented that somebody doesn't care for or what have you, and the time to see that isn't after it's already on the building. The time to see it would be before it gets placed on the building, so Alderman Snow?
So Gina, I don't really recall that they have to really tell or show what the mural is going to be in order, isn't it just the fact they're going to present that it's a mural and the size of it?
And that is the slippery slope of freedom of speech. So definitely, you want to look at size and placement, but when you start critiquing the design and stuff, it's a slippery slope, which is why we've never... Obviously, you look for like vulgarity and stuff like that, but when you start overly critiquing the picture, it can, it can open up a can of worms. So it is mostly placement and size, and if it was lit up and stuff like that. This specific building had a special use for a mural already. So you, and it didn't, that special use did not condition the size or placement, it just approved any mural on that building with... So the council couldn't have critiqued placement, size, anything like that because there was already existing special use, it was really for the change of the image. But again, you can't go too far into that image critiquing because then it's the can of worms.
I think it's important to note that the council inevitably has to live with whatever gets placed on there. People are going to hold you guys accountable for what gets placed on the buildings, and I'm not looking at a critique as much as I'm looking at maybe a rating. Maybe somebody thinks that there's something more important we could put on the building. Maybe they don't object to, maybe they don't object to a specific one, but they do think that maybe there's a better one to put up. But I would like to see the council see it ahead of time, all of them, because I think inevitably, you guys are going to be the ones that are going to own it, so... Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, not to critique it so much, but it could come to the council as this is, this is the picture, this is the design, approve or not approve, right? We could vote it up or vote it down, and then they would have to come back with a different one to be voted up or down, or they could present multiple ones at the same time, and then each one could be picked from by the council, right?
When you say multiple ones, do you mean multiple image, images for the same building or multiple murals all at once?
I'll jump in. The easy answer is no. Under the First Amendment, we can critique and we can approve or deny a mural, or very limited as to the basis for the denial. It can't be that we like one mural better than another one. If it has profanity, the seven dirty words of George Carlin, if it has obscene material which are very specific definition under First Amendment cases, then yeah, you could deny it. But if somebody wanted to put up a depiction of the former Leith Building and somebody else wanted to put up a depiction of Heritage Days Festival, we can't pick one or the other and still comply with the First Amendment.
Alderman Snow?
So, that being said though, so is there any real reason that at the zoning portion that the image has to be out there, presented so that the public can see it? And really, the public doesn't really come to them other than the people that have another case. To me, to me, it seems like we're jumping through hoops in that regards as opposed to going ahead and making them do the proper timing and get it approved.
So the code calls them out as a special use as a way to differentiate them for chain signage, otherwise you could have someone using the whole building for a sign as a way to bypass the sign code. So that does require the public hearing and all that stuff. As far as just approving a mural of this size, this size, this location, and this lighting style, I guess technically you could, but then there are incidents, cases where you could deny it, vulgarity, obscenity, stuff like that, and you would miss your chance on that because you wouldn't have seen the image. So that's why the image is still shown, just so that the council, you know, can be assured that there is nothing, you know, racy on there.
Alderwoman Prather, did you have a question?
Well, I was just interested in what our city attorney had had to say about it, so I'm glad he spoke up there. And, you know, I could see where, if these things were on actually like city property, that's one thing, but these are private properties, aren't they not? So I would think that, you know, as you say, we really kind of have to stay with the legal parameters on that and not have it be a preference of one or the other.
There's a couple of areas where you get control. One is through your budget. If you help pay for the mural, obviously you got a say in it. No different than the federal government dictating speed limits by using highway funds like they did back in the seventies, I think, or sixties. So that's one way you do it. And Gina alluded to the old, we're trying to keep them from using their mural as a giant sign. That was one of the reasons we developed the code the way it was developed. The same case, believe it or not, that made us undo our begging ordinance recently, throws all that into a quandary as to whether we can still do that or not. And there's not been a specific mural case out there, but based on that one, I kind of think I know how it would go, but I won't say that yet.
Alderwoman Freeman, and then Alderman Flurry.
Thank you. So are all of these done through the Arts Council, or can anybody that owns a building downtown just go ahead and get a special use and put up a mural of anything they want as long as it's not vulgar?
Anyone can apply for a special use and anyone can do it. There's one on Buchanan Street that was done by the high school students a couple of years ago, well, maybe more like 12 now, but that was not an Arts Council mural. It just happens that the Arts Council does do the majority of them in town, but no, anyone can apply for the special use and anyone can paint or install the panels. Again, the council just kind of does the review just to make sure that there's no obscenity and stuff like that. But yeah, no, it does not have to be Arts Council.
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. Do you know approximately how many murals the Arts Council has been a part of?
Oh, I want to say probably high twenties. Not positive, but that feels right.
Right, and this is the process we've done for those previous, for the Heritage Days. I understand any other mural, obviously, there just goes through the right steps, but in regards to Heritage Days, I understand they're wanting for secrecy to make that grand reveal, so how many Heritage Days ones have they had?
This is only their third or fourth Heritage Days one, and yeah, that's how they've done all their Heritage Days ones for the last couple of years that they've done them.
Right, so, I mean, my opinion would be that if, you know, they have a council with a board that approves it, and then, you know, obviously, they want to beautify the city, so I don't think we have to worry about the Arts Council putting up some kind of, you know, obscene mural as they've had a track record of doing the right thing. So, I mean, in my opinion would be, so not the case of, you know, it being revealed before the public can see it. I know they make a big deal of that, they generate a lot of attention and bring some awareness to the Arts Council and probably some fundraising, something like that. So, I mean, in my opinion, I think that the process we are doing, I think it works out okay, but I can see how some people are concerned that it kind of goes out of order, but I think just for this one special reason because it's tied to Heritage Days, I think it's okay.
I would agree, I think it does go out of order, and I have only been here for one. I haven't been here for the last two or three, and I've been here for one, and in the future, I'm sure the council can keep a secret, can't you? Yeah. So I will bring it, the council will see it, and I believe they rightfully should see it, so if you want to look at it when I bring it forward, then don't. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So is there also something in the, I guess, I don't know, paperwork about maintenance for them, otherwise they end up being like more of an eyesore? I know the one on the side of the Apollo that just depicts our Hispanic heritage really needs some maintenance. There are others, but do, can we make them fix the ones that are in disrepair before they can do another one?
So the answer is, all the current new ordinances that Gina's prepared do have clauses in there requiring maintenance. That obligation is actually on the property owner, whoever owns the building. Usually, they might have some kind of agreement with, if it's done by an artist like the Arts Council where they give them a license to put on the building, and the Arts Council may maintain that, but new ordinances have that in there. Older ordinances that were approved in days gone by, no, they did not. That being said, the murals are part of somebody's building that comes in the normal property maintenance code at that point. So to the extent it would violate the property maintenance code, yes, we can take enforcement action. Obviously, trying to preserve the murals, you don't necessarily want to whitewash it or sandblast it down, but that's the only mechanism that does. But all the new ordinances do have maintenance requirements in them.
Okay, anything else? All right, hearing nothing else, we have a motion and a second then on the second reading. An ordinance granting a special use to allow a mural within the central business district 216 South State Street. Those that are in favor will signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay, when the clerk calls the roll.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item B, ordinance 550H for second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the neighborhood business district located at 1746 South State Street. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any discussion? Any questions? Alderwoman Freeman? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. So I talked to Gina about this earlier. We've kept it at 40, and we currently have 36 with another seven that are approved, but four of those are a ways out. So we really technically have like 39 already almost done here. My concern is, when I voted to raise the cap, I intended it for established businesses that already had a restaurant or a bar that would like to have added some gaming machines. I know that we can't control that, but, you know, I did not intend for it to be all these little pop-up gaming parlor on every corner around town. I think the community has seen enough of them. I think they're roughly fed up with them, and I, I don't think that that's, that's at least not what I intended raising the cap to be for.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Gina, how many people are on the waiting list right now?
So as Marsha stated, there's 36 licenses issued, and then there are three properties that have a special use approved but are not even close to moving forward. There's one existing gaming parlor that is currently closed, but I do know that someone is moving forward on reopening that, so that would be one of the four possibilities, but again, an existing location. And then there are one, two, three, four other ones that have their special uses approved. One, I already know, had their state inspection, so they're just waiting for the state approval. One got building permits about a week and a half ago to start renovating, to get themselves prepared for their state inspection, and the two are very recently new approvals, so they have not moved forward yet. So again, out of that cap of 40, it is getting very close to the end of that.
Can I ask a question?
Would you come up, would you please come up? Come on up. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Debbie Wallace, I live on Whitney Boulevard, and I, my question and then a comment, if I'm allowed to make a comment. I mean, I don't know what the order is here or anything, so you just tell me.
We just made it up right now.
Oh. Are you talking about the property that's directly across from my house by the Dollar Tree store, and there used to be a Cash Advance store there, and now you want to put a gaming parlor there? Is that what you are discussing at this time? Yes. Well, I'm always the one that opens my mouth, but I have two other people here, I don't know if they're going to come up and protest, but I live right across the street from there, and I don't think that's going to do anything to help my property value. I mean, I'm not planning on selling my house in the near future, but at some point, being that I'm a senior and my husband's a senior, we will at some point have to sell that house, and we just spent a lot of money to paint it, and we keep it up nice, as my, does my neighbor across the street who's here with me, and the other neighbors around too, who for one reason or another didn't come, but they told me I could speak for all of them. I said, "Well, then you should be here," but they aren't, I am, so I'm speaking for about 12 people here. That's, that's a residential area that is not going to help our property values, and you don't spend money to keep your house up. I mean, I'm not going to tell you how much I just spent to have my house painted, but it wasn't cheap, and I don't do that so I can have another gaming parlor across the street that eventually is going to bring my property value down. We have enough, I don't care what the limit is as far as, you know, Gina just mentioned the limit of whatever, 40 or something, and we don't have quite that many now. That doesn't make any difference to me because we have more than is necessary, so whatever the limit is, just, well, we aren't the limit, so let's add a few more. That kind of doesn't make any sense to me. It's kind of like, well, something's bad, but we don't reach the limit, so we can add a few more bad apples to the basket, you know, because we haven't reached the limit yet. So for whatever it's worth, that shouldn't happen. We should not have our property values go down just because we haven't reached the limit for something that's already over saturated in this community. You can go to every corner, almost every gas station, and gamble if you want to. So if that's what you like to do with your money and your time, then you have multiple opportunities in this area, or you can drive to Rockford, and within a couple of years, you'll have a big casino at the intersection of the Tollway and East State Street. We do not need this, and it's not fair to the people who live around there and what that does to their property values. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate, appreciate you coming up here this evening, taking the time to come here. I might add that I think the, the limits were raised, and correct me if I'm wrong, I wasn't here, I wasn't in office, but they were raised, was it last year or two years ago?
I believe it was in 2020. Pull up her records.
And I think they were raised from 30 to 40, is that correct?
Correct, in 2013, the city allowed gaming, and at 2020, they capped it to 40.
And it should be, it's worth noting, when the city originally allowed gaming, there was no cap, and then for reasons that were just articulated, they kept it at 30. We had a situation, oh, a year, two ago, we had a lot of people making requests and have licenses available, and the city wanted to approve, the council at that time wanted to approve, some of those, they raised the cap to 40. For what it's worth, I'd remind the council, while we all know we're talking about in part video gaming, that's not what you're proving tonight. The special use allows indoor commercial entertainment generally. If you want to have a tavern or bar in Belvidere, even if you're not going to do video gaming, you have to have indoor commercial entertainment. If you want to have a pool hall in Belvidere, and if you're not selling alcohol, even if you're not doing indoor gaming, you have to have indoor commercial entertainment. This is our catch-all special use for entertainment services within the city of Belvidere. So just reminding, when you see indoor commercial entertainment, even though it's been this way for about two years, it doesn't necessarily mean video gaming. That comes back at the licensing stage of the state and the city clerk.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So that area is right next to the Red Cross Blood Bank on one side, and then you have the Dollar Tree on the other side. Obviously, the Blood Bank doesn't stay open until 2:00 a.m., nor does the Dollar Tree. I don't believe that this is a good fit for that property or that area.
I believe there's a condition of the ordinance regarding time.
Correct, the property is owned in neighborhood business, so within your zoning code, it does not allow businesses to stay open past 11 o'clock at night. So the special use does not alter that, so the business would have to be shut down by 11, and the applicant is aware of that.
Anybody else? Alderman Flurry?
All right, so just to be clear, so this, it would have to come back another time for the gambling, or you're saying, I was a little confused yesterday turning about the special use here, so if you approve this, but then they want to do video gaming, that would be another ordinance, or is this all covered in that?
The next step is not, does not come to city council. If they receive a special use for indoor commercial entertainment, then they have to apply to the city clerk for a license, they also have to apply to the state of Illinois for a license. The state of Illinois is the much harder hoop to jump through because they're the ones that look at locations, and they look at the, how close it is to churches and schools and how near in that local proximity to decide whether or not it's a good spot for video gaming, and that's done by, by the state. So they still have to go through that process. My guess is they probably already talked to the state, and have a pretty good idea whether or not, or through their gaming operator at least, and have a good idea whether they'd be approved or not. You do not actually approve video gaming, that's done by the state, and then we have licenses that we issue in order to capture our $500 per machine.
And, and that number was previously raised from 30 to 40?
Correct.
So that's where we're at. Anybody else on the council have any other questions, comments, any concerns? Alderwoman Frank?
I'm just wondering if this is a for sure thing since they have to wait for the number to pop up before they can start renovating inside, or is it a for sure thing?
It's not, and I explained to every applicant that applies that just because you get the special use approved does not guarantee you the licensing. One, the state could deny it. Two, you may not be able to get the bathrooms and the remodeling that's needed. Three, the city could run out of licenses. Like Attorney Drella said, the special use is all encompassing arcades, so the video gaming machines are like an adult arcade, that's how it falls into that loop. I always mention video gaming in here, so the council is aware of the applicant's intent, but yeah, they could get the special use approved and have a wine bar or, you know, a small pool hall or stuff like that, because yeah, the video gaming then is a next step of regulations they have to go through with the state and remodeling, and then the city clerk issuing the stickers is the very last step, and there is no guarantee that... And there is no guarantee that there will be stickers left by the time you get to that point. The state doesn't always take applications in order that they receive. I've been told that by several people. And just because they get the special use, you know, one could apply to the state the next day, one could apply to the state five months later. So it's, it's not an order of special use approval. It's just whoever gets to the city clerk first with all their ducks in a row. So yeah, I'm always very clear with all applicants that special use does not guarantee, um, video gaming machines.
Thank you. That clears it up.
Anybody else on the council have any other comments, any questions? Ma'am, did you want to make another comment?
Yeah.
Could you, do you mind? I would like you to, if you don't mind.
If you don't, they can't hear you.
If, yeah, if you don't, then the people that are listening, they can't hear. Thank you.
Well, I just have two questions. Number one, well, why do we have to raise it to forty when we have so many anyway? Why do we have to raise it to that high a number?
Well, that's a good question. There were aldermen and alderwomen here. Uh, I wasn't present whenever this was raised, but whenever it was raised, I know there was a question about, is there a saturation? And at what, at what point?
Right.
Do you carve up the pie? At what point the, the revenue stream stays the same? You have more players, but there actually isn't any more money. There isn't any more revenue involved. So I think that's a fair question. What we have now is we have a ordinance that's on the books that would allow this to come forward and certainly allows you to come here and make a state, make a statement in favor or against how you see it on behalf of yourself and whoever else.
And neighbors.
And your neighbors. So that's part of the process. But with that being said, we do have, uh, this has been brought from a first reading to now a second reading. And as it is written right now, it's up to, you know, a vote. And so it is up, it is up to a vote because we do have room for one. And I certainly heard what you said.
Didn't make any difference, though, did it?
Well, ma'am, I don't have a vote.
I know. It still doesn't make any difference, but I got it off my chest. It's not going to make any difference, but I got it off my chest. But the second question is, is the state, because it's not a done deal yet, if I understood right, the state has the final say over proving this. Did I understand that correctly? Gina, the state has the final.
Correct. In order, in order to have video gaming machines, you have to have a liquor license that allows you to pour. So the applicant would need to get a state and local liquor, state li- liquor license, local liquor license. And then the state also has to approve your video gaming machine license. So at any time, although I don't foresee it, the state could deny your liquor license or the state could deny your gaming license. They are the ones with the ultimate say.
So my second question is, when you, and I mean you in a very general sense, whoever is responsible for submitting this to the state, will there be a note in there that this is in a residential district? I mean, you can say, "Oh, the Blood Bank is, is two doors over," and the Cash Advance Store is gone, which is the, the space they're going to occupy, and the Dollar Store is next to it. Now, if you just say that, you again, generally speaking, whoever sends the information to the state, if you just say that and you don't add that this is a residential neighborhood and the directly down, we call the berm, the hill that goes from the back parking lot down to Whitney, is completely residential. The high school is only, the original Belvedere High School is only four or five blocks away. Everything else in that area is residential. So if it's submitted to the state and you just list the businesses that are right next door, they could think it's a business thing. They're not going to be aware. So again, I hope whoever submits this puts that there is residential property literally within just a few hundred feet and the whole, except for that one little strip mall where this is going to be and the businesses right next to it, all the rest of there is residential with the high school and everything else. And that should be an important part because without that in there, it doesn't give the real picture of what, what they're putting inside a residential community. I mean, there's high school and there's kids playing, and it just shouldn't be there. So I hope that that is put in so they have the complete picture of the whole area, not just the businesses.
The applicant submits to the state and the state does an onsite inspection. It's my understanding that they inspect all properties onsite in person before they make a conclusion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, any questions, any concerns? Alderman Porter?
I guess just one quick comment. It just seems like, and I don't know if we have any control over this or not, but it seems like with all other businesses that we're hurting for in this town that this doesn't seem like a good fit. It seems like we could get some other type of business in there, like a shoe store or anything like that, that we, you know, some other type of business that would benefit families and that type of thing.
We can't dictate to a property owner what kind of business they operate outside of zoning allows this, zoning doesn't allow this, but we can't say we prefer you to have this one instead. For special uses, there's a, um, in the staff reports that you guys get, they're called the findings of fact, which are basically the, the sale factors. So per state law, when you review special uses, you compare them to those findings of fact, and if they come out positive, then there's really no grounds for denial. And those findings of fact are based on case law, and that's what the state wants us to look at. And it is, does it impede development? Does it block light or cause odors, stuff like that? And the findings that were adopted were in the positive. But those are what we have to ask staff and as the Public Hearing Plan Commission, that the neighbors are notified of to attend those meetings. Those are the factors that they have to look at. But yeah, we can't tell a business owner, "We want you to have that business over this one." That's, that's up to their right to decide.
And let's take it a step further because Gina mentioned state law. Special uses, map amendments, text amendments, in this case we're calling them special uses, they require, especially the tech, the, uh, special uses, a public hearing before your planning zoning commission. Notices are mailed out to all the people who live within, I think it's two hundred and fifty feet of the, of the location. It's published in the paper. There's a sign on the property to advise them of that public hearing. The state law is real specific. You are required to rely upon the evidence that's seduced at that hearing. And while I always encourage people to come and talk to you at a city council meeting, there's plenty of cases that uphold the fact that you have to make your decision based on what comes out of that, that public hearing, which is when all the evidence was presented. And that public hearing is a lot like a mini trial. The applicant gets put on their case why they think it's a good idea, what's good in that area, things like that. The city can have it say if they want to, and then anybody that wants to object to it can go up there and cross-examine the applicant's witnesses, present their own evidence, subject cross-examined by the applicant, and all those kinds of things. It's just like a due process trial. And so I'd, I'd remind you of that because you do get all that information in your packets and, and of course, you read that from the city council meetings. So that's the information that you really base your decision on.
And Gina, just to refresh my memory, did we have any objections at the planning zoning?
There isn't a single person that attended the public hearing to speak on the matter.
Okay. And then also to be fair, I think we have the applicant here. Is that correct? Rosa, Rosa Mascado? I don't know if you wanted to say anything or not. I know you had talked a little bit earlier at a previous meeting, but I don't know if there's anything you want to add or anything that you have to say. If you do, would you please come up? Thank you.
I guess mostly I just wanted to try to reassure you that we're a family-owned business. Very highly respected people. Sorry, I get nervous talking in front of groups. You have different, like, kind of people, so I'm sorry. This thing doesn't help.
I agree. Agreed, yes, you can take it off.
So I just, I want to apologize. I'm sorry that you're upset about it, but we, we have, my family owns many businesses. We own restaurants and we own other slot parlors. We do not commit scandal. Like Gina said, I understand, we have the closes at eleven o'clock at night. It's not going to be allowed. We don't allow drunk, wild, loud people. We kick them out, so we don't, we don't deal with that. Do you have any other questions for me, or anything?
Well, I just want to make a comment on the louds making comments. Do I have to come up there again?
Well, hold on just a second here.
Thank you. I'm not questioning that. I mean, I'm not questioning that there's going to be drunken people out at 2:00 AM in the morning whooping and hollering or, or doing other things that would disturb the neighborhood. It's the nature of the business. I'm sure you have a very respectable, upstanding business. And my neighbors, I guess they didn't say anything, but they were here that live across the street from me at the first meeting. I asked them, "Did you say anything?" They said, "No," so that's probably why they didn't know they were here. But they live right across the street on the other side of the retaining wall. That house is on the other side of the retaining wall there at the corner, you know? That they built the retaining wall there. That's their house right below that. So, um, you know, I don't doubt your integrity, your sincerity, your honesty, that it will be a respectable business with, with, um, not the kind of crowd that would populate a bar and be out in the parking lot at 2:00 AM causing all kinds of problems. It's just the nature of the business. It does not belong in a residential neighborhood, period. A shoe store, a beauty salon, and like Gina said, you can't tell them what you can have, which I didn't understand. But as she explained, that you can have this permit. Now, this is what you got to put in here. Once you give them the permit, then they have, and they abide by all the rules and jump through all the hoops and, you know, all the requirements. They have the, you have the freedom to put what you wish in there when you've met all the requirements from the city and the state. So I'm not doubting that you are a very fair, honest person, and you run a very respectable integrity business. I don't want it there because it's a gaming video parlor, no matter how good it is and how honest you are, and I'm sure you are all of those things. That kind of business does not belong in a residential neighborhood with a high school five, six blocks away, little kids riding their bikes up and down the street. It does not belong in a residential neighborhood, a business district. Or like there's one out by Barnes and Farm and Fleet out there. Those kind of places, that's great. Not in a residential district. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Rosa, go ahead.
So like over by that Rosa Slots that just opened up, she purchased, there was a slot parlor before. That's fairly close to residential, correct? Does the council know, like, has that affected their, their value over there? Their property value? Does, I mean?
To my knowledge, it has not, but.
Okay. Just because I think, I think that's.
That's, that's my main concern, but I don't think, the kids need to see that. I just, I just don't think that we want, yes, that is a concern as I expressed the first time I was up there.
Right.
But I just, I know it's hard to say. People say I kind of heated that part, so I, I don't want to do that and waste everybody's time. Maybe it hasn't. I don't know. When you say that, but has there been anybody, do you really know that? Has there been any comparison done? You'd have to have a comparison of what was my house before this was here and what is my house, value of my house now that it is here, to really say that truly you have to check. This is what it was before this was built here, and this is the value of my property now that it's here. So I don't think anybody's done a study on that.
Comparison.
So you really don't know for sure. And, and other than that, I just think with kids riding around, a high school kid, and it's a residential area that belongs to any business district or, you know, out on by Farm and Fleet where there's not too many houses or, I don't know how many more you can put downtown in gas stations. It seems like in every corner, every gas station, there's one. It does, does not belong in a residential district, period.
Okay. So she feels.
Rosa, did, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I really, I don't know what else I could add.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay. Sir? You do. Just state your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is James Willis. I live with that lovely lady right there. She's been speaking already. And I'd like to thank the board for giving me a moment to speak. I think we're missing out on the opportunity that this location is right next door to the Dollar Store. There is more foot traffic coming into that store from nine o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night. To the end of your stores up and down State Street. And I think it's a marvelous opportunity for somebody who wants to win the business and open up a nice business depending upon foot traffic to be in that location. I think we have enough of these gaming establishments around town. They're like mosquitoes. They're all over town. I think we've got more than enough of them. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else want to weigh in? Anybody else have any questions or comments? Alderman Flurry?
As for the city attorney, so if I understand correctly, although there is, you know, some debate here tonight, really that should have been handled at the commission meeting for the findings of fact?
The, the challenges to the proposed conditions, the challenges to whether special use should be approved or not approved. While ultimately the decision lies with the city council, yes, those kinds of factors, that kind of evidence should be put forth before the Planning and Zoning Commission in that public hearing. Because you're required by law to rely upon those findings in making your ultimate decision. It's also important to note that while there's residential nearby, it's actually zoned commercial. It's a public, it's a planned business, I believe? Neighborhood business. It's a commercial zoning district. And I believe we have other gaming parlors and neighborhood business or planned businesses as well around the city, correct?
Yes.
And proximity residential, so that's something to keep in mind. Whether or not additional gaming in the city is a good idea is a different story, as opposed to what this location is.
Alderman Porter?
So then I guess I would have to ask at this point, legally, do we still have a yes or no vote in this? Or are we just legally required to vote yes on this?
You absolutely have a vote, the ability to vote no. If you vote no, however, and it is in contravention to the evidence and in contravention to your own code, you run the risk of a possible lawsuit down the road.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So I live, um, right down the street from that area on South State Street. And I can tell you, there is a tremendous amount of foot traffic that goes right by my house, right up to the Dollar Tree. There's kids on bikes, families that walk together. They push strollers up there. They walk back with their Dollar Tree bags. The kids go up there. The Dollar Tree is, um, I guess the equivalent of what used to be the dime store. And so there's a huge, huge, huge amount of people and foot traffic, bicycles, skateboards, you name it, that is constantly in route, back and forth to that, um, area. So, um, I just have to say, I don't, I don't think it's a good fit for, um, where they want to, where they want to put it. And, and I would, I would hope they could find a different location.
And Alderman Freeman, are you suggesting it's not a good fit because of safety concerns of some kind?
There's just a huge amount of children of all ages. Little ones being taken up there by their older siblings, anywhere from junior high, to, um, strollers at all times.
Okay. Alderwoman Frank?
I agree with Alderman Freeman. That would be my only concern would be the safety issue. I was going to vote yes just because we had a cap at forty and we're under forty, so that's why I would vote yes. But now I'm having second thoughts about the safety issues. If they had one too many drinks and they pulled out and they didn't see that little short three-year-old, I, I mean, that's what my concern is.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once? All right then. We have a motion and a second on the floor for, uh, to grant a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the neighborhood business district at seventeen forty-six South State Street. All those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye, and any opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Nay.
Brather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
No.
Five in favor?